Good morning, everybody. This is the Wednesday, April 15th, 2020, regular meeting of the Nax Head Board of Commissioners and hereby called to order. I'd like to say to those who are watching and listening remotely, good morning. Welcome to the remote meeting of the Nax Head Board of Commissioners. The format for today's meeting is obviously not the norm, but is in response to the declared state of emergency and is intended to recognize local, state, and federal directives to stay at home and avoid the gathering of groups. We've made every attempt to allow for public participation and engagement as if this were a physical meeting. Hopefully, members of the public will be able to provide their comments for the public comment portion of the meeting, as well as the public hearing if desired. Comments can be forwarded to publiccomment041520@naxheadmc.gov during the meeting if not done beforehand. Beyond these two agenda items, like a traditional physical meeting of the board, there are no other opportunities for public comment. The remaining comments, discussions, and presentations will be by members of the board or town staff, and we certainly appreciate your patience with today's meeting. As we go into our moment of silence today, we'll have a little time to think about those affected by this epidemic, the sick and their families, caregivers, their first responders, public works and other employees who've had to adjust to difficult circumstances, and all of those anxious about their economic circumstances. So if you'll please join me in a few moments of silence. Now, if you will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is in a different spot this morning. The pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one. Well, whatever it is that's this far off. That brings us to an item that's a little out of the usual order this morning, which is adoption of an electronic meeting policy, which you've been provided and have in your package. And so any discussion or a motion to adopt would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is the regular adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Mayor, before we adopt the agenda, I'd like to request that we move the March 4th minutes from the consent agenda. There's an item on there. The Attorney Director Lee Mettles came, and those minutes are really not substantial enough to know what his comments were. I'd like to have those verified for presentation at later meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
With that said, I would make a motion to adopt the agenda with the removal of the March 4th meeting minutes.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to public comment, which is going to be fairly unusual today. We have a number of written comments, which it's my understanding that we need to read into the record. So I'm going to start with those, and then when my voice gets tired, Cliff's going to take it up from there. And then, for those of you listening, any comments submitted during the meeting, we will circle back to at the end of the agenda. The first item is from James Kofield, representing the League of Women Voters of Dare County. I am here to present the 2020 Citizens' Guide, your guide to community services. Complimentary copies of the guide, published by the League since 1988, are distributed annually to government and business offices throughout Dare County. The Citizens' Guide contains contact information for local, state, and national governmental agencies, voting information, emergency numbers, and a great deal more. Women voters, Citizen Education Foundation, we would like to acknowledge the municipalities and local businesses that donated generously toward our publication expenses. Other information is listed on the back cover of the guide. We also want to acknowledge the support of the many staff members throughout the county who provide updated information for this year's version. This year, 7,000 copies of the guide are being distributed by League members from Duck to Hatterst Village, Roanoke Island, and mainland Dare County. They are available in libraries, post offices, the VOM, and Fessenden Centers, as well as town and county offices. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens and government, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Publishing this guide is part of our continued commitment to provide pertinent information to our community's voters. Membership in the League of Women Voters is open to anyone of voting age, female or male. New members are always welcome. Thank you for your support. We know you will find our guide useful. The next item is from Betsy Salomansky. Ladies and gentlemen, there are two things we'd like the board to reconsider. Number one, the amount of time slash notice given to all when shutting down access to the Outer Banks. The March 17 notice prohibiting guests of maybe two hours before steps were put in place for restrictions isn't sufficient. We ask to have that altered to be at least 24 hours. Two, restriction of nonresident property owners also needs to be addressed. The March 20 notice with less than five hours does not give property owners enough time to make the necessary arrangements. Our homes have been sitting unattended since at least this time, if not longer. Many of us are only able to be in our second homes on the Outer Banks during weekends. Therefore, restricting all of us with such short notice isn't sufficient. We respect Dare County and decisions made in the best interest of all. We ask for the same respect. They are from Richmond, Virginia. The next item is from Paul Carr, who lives at 3217 South Wrightsville Avenue. Please explain your rationale for denying longtime homeowners, who have faithfully paid their property taxes, access to their homes while at the same time permitting local residents to go and come anywhere at will. There are lots of small communities, but Dare County is the only place treating its taxpayers this way. The next item is from Lisa Brown, from Chesapeake, Virginia, the owner of 2239 South Virginia Dare Trail. Open the Outer Banks to nonresident property owners. Since social distancing is in place, we should have no more effect on your population than the hundreds of OBX residents who leave the county and return every day. I live in Chesapeake, and just in my two-mile trip to the grocery store, I saw seven North Carolina OBX Vanity Place. And the Harris Teeter in the Outer Banks was stocked the same as the one in Chesapeake, so you can't really use that as an excuse. We cannot afford to lose the summer rental season. That would have a serious financial impact on us, other property owners, and businesses. The mitigation is to keep nonrelated groups apart, let renters come down, but restaurants operate as takeout slash delivery only. That starts getting most of the people, businesses, and town revenue. Losing money will result in foreclosures and boarded-up businesses, something I don't think any of us want to see. Also, ask all of your now unemployed hospitality workers how they feel about not having a job. The next item is from Eric Feifield, who lives in Manio. My name is Eric Feifield, and I have lived here on the Outer Banks almost my entire life. There really is no other place I could imagine living. I wanted to reach out regarding the bridge closure that is affecting all of us here on the Outer Banks. I completely understand that we must keep our residents safe and not overflow the hospital, which is not equipped to handle a large influx of patients. I'm thankful we made the decision to shut down all nonresidents onto the island to ensure everyone's safety. Like so many others I know who live here year-round, we all struggle with the higher-than-normal housing prices and will not be able to afford to pay our rent or put food on the table if we keep our bridges closed for the entire month of May. Please consider opening up the bridges in the near future, or at least give us a better indication of what to expect. I currently worry if we don't open the bridges up sometime soon, I'm hoping at least the second or third week of May, then how are so many of us going to make it the tourists do not come and our economy collapses here on the island? I will be living in my car and probably have to consider moving off the beach, like so many others who just can't afford to live here anymore. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter, and good luck to you and your families. The next item is from Nancy Boyers, who I have an address. To the Town Council, if you wait until August to open the beach, this is going to be devastating on everyone. The Outer Banks needs to be opened up by June 1st. People can still take precautions. This is going to kill property values, and many owners may be forced into losing their property due to no rentals to support the mortgages and fees associated with the property. Being an owner of two condos in Nax Head, I was very upset that not even the owners of property were allowed to come and prepare the property for the rental season. The Outer Banks depends on tourism, so please keep this in mind as you make your decisions. Next item is from Boz Coburn. I'm a nonresident Nax Head property owner in the village. As painful as it was to return rent deposits from March and April, and probably from May, I'm somewhat in, but not in full agreement with the closure of our town to prevent the spread of the virus. I have some comments. If the science allows us, I think we could try for a Memorial Day opening to guests. I would like to see the town open to us property owners by early May, May 1st, or shortly after for maintenance purposes and quiet enjoyment of our properties. Maybe limit the number of family members based on bedroom size or occupancy by half. So if a house can sleep 20, then only 10 family members can occupy. The Outer Banks should impose strict social distancing and only essential services between now and Memorial Day, or when open to guests. Only food stores, drugstores, and curbside restaurants pick up until a Memorial Day opening or guests open. Depending on the science, we may even need to keep strict rules in place even well after the town opens to guests. Hotel accommodations where people are in close quarters should remain closed or significantly limited to occupancy well after the opening to guests. Single homes in Nax Head provide safe distances between each other, and the beaches are large enough to practice social distancing. Kindly provide a deferral of our local real estate taxes. It is not fair we have to pay these newly and highly rated assessments when our local government choice or choice is to close the town. Can we roll back the assessments to the old ones for the next year? My mortgage is in a forbearance program. I will remain current on all utilities and insurance premiums. As you know, our insurance premiums are very high on the beach. Thank you for the opportunity to hear my opinion. He's the owner of 6209 South Virginia Dare Trail. He lives in Duvoc, Pennsylvania. The next item is from Barry Rockaway, who lives in Brooklyn, New York, who is the owner of 10021 East Pelican Street. Commissioners, I've been a Nax Head vacationer for the past 40 years. I'm a proud Nax Head homeowner for the last 15 of those 40 years. I decided to buy a home in Nax Head because I always felt Nax Head mayors and commissioners were forward-thinking and valued community input in making decisions about the future of Nax Head. While I may disagree with the constitutionality of the Dare County Board of Commissioners' decision to bar nonresident property owners from entering their homes in Dare County, I also understand the importance of stay-at-home mandates and social distancing rules, as I am a permanent resident of Brooklyn, New York. My one request of the board is that you support nonresident property owners of Nax Head to be able to enter the county two to four weeks before any visitors are allowed entry. This time is needed to prepare homes to ensure visitors have a memorable vacation. Thank you for your consideration. The next item is from Mary Susan Shrek, who lives in Hannover, Virginia, is the owner of 5021V South Virginia Dare Trail. I would like to hear a discussion of what the town is doing to protect property of nonresident homeowners. Given that locals have stated on social media that they will consult public county records to identify nonresident homeowners, some going so far as to publish addresses. How will our property be protected from break-ins, vandalism, petty theft, and other crimes? Thank you. Next item is from Brand Bottom, who lives in Catskill Bay, New York, is the owner of 1014 South Virginia Dare Trail. Reopening too soon may cause further outbreaks and cause the county to close again. Dare County has a remarkably low number of cases as a result of good decisions by local government. As disruptive as it is to stay closed until it's safe, it couldn't be more disruptive if we reopen and then had to re-close. Based on that, I would err on the side of caution, despite the fact that it will negatively impact our income. I do not, however, have any recommendations on when we could reopen at this point, although I would base it on CDC recommendations and case rate statistics. Kind regards and thank you for your prudent judgment. Next item is from Leslie Miles, who lives in Bethesda, Maryland, is the owner of 5006 South Link Drive. Your town commissioners, thank you for taking public comments and for your service. We are in the third season of ownership of a house in the village at Nax Head after owning another home there from 1994 to 2006. While we rely on the rental income to support the cost of ownership, which has involved significant investment aside from standard carrying costs, we do not want to see the town reopen for business until that decision makes sense from a health perspective. Until there is either widespread rapid testing and contact tracing, or comprehensive serology testing, or highly effective treatment, it will not be possible for business as usual to resume. Renting a single-family house does not appear to pose unnecessary risks, but our guests will not choose to visit unless beaches, parks, dine-in restaurants, and other attractions are open as well. These facilities depend upon some concentration of people that does not comport with social distancing. These businesses and attractions cannot reopen if they pose a threat to public health, and we urge you to ensure that health, rather than business interests, are prioritized. I would note, however, that given that permanent residents of the OBX are permitted to leave and return, risking exposure and infection wherever they go, and that community spread has already occurred, it no longer seems rational to prevent homeowners from accessing their properties, and I would urge you to support lifting that restriction. Thank you for considering my views. The next letter is from Joe and Nancy Murdock, who own a home at 6114 East Bay Meadow Drive. We are Joe and Nancy Murdock and own a vacation rental home at the address I just indicated in Nax Head. Even with our current residence being in Aiken, South Carolina, we are normally using our home on the Outer Banks in long weekends year-round, except for our rental season, which runs Memorial Day through Labor Day. We understand the dilemma you face as a board, but feel the restrictions should be loosened as soon as the governor loosens restrictions to allow homeowners back to the Outer Banks. The nonresident owners pay taxes, just like the locals, and should be allowed to take care of our homes and enjoy the beaches we are paying to use with social distancing still being practiced. The overarching question for the entire country is what is the criteria and timing for loosening the shelter-in-place orders and getting back to normal? Although back to normal may be many months out, we must implement a graded approach based on the risk to open the Outer Banks. Obviously, the currently tough restrictions placed on the Outer Banks has not kept all the cases out, and as the restrictions get relaxed, the total case rate may increase. That's just based on probability. A phased approach is necessary. The current CDC guidelines must still be followed to limit the spread of COVID-19 even as more people head to the Outer Banks. Those include social distancing and frequent handwashing, along with the normal personal hygiene requirements. Restaurants and stores must have means to maintain social distancing. Takeout food and limits to the number of people in stores are actions much of the country have implemented with essential businesses. Large gatherings have to be restricted, including large groups together on the beach. These actions must be put in place as additional people are allowed access to the Outer Banks. Out-of-town homeowners and workers would be the first group to be relieved. As with all plans, you monitor the situation. You should monitor the case rate for three weeks and adjust as necessary. This gives the elected officials facts versus a motion to make future decisions, as it takes you through more than one cycle for COVID-19. This also allows homeowners the ability to utilize their home and prepare for rental season if applicable. As the graded approach continues, nonessential businesses can be open, and visitors can be allowed with the restrictions above. Those restrictions can be reduced or altered as additional data is obtained, including potential antibodies and additional CDC testing protocols. Regarding the timing, the country will be past the COVID-19 peak by late April, which corresponds with many of the governor's stay-at-home orders. Given that, once the governor of North Carolina relaxes those orders, it will be pursued with the approach discussed. This approach provides protection to the citizens of the Outer Banks, allows access for homeowners, restores businesses, and provides the framework to return to a normal Outer Banks. The next item is from Susan Schwartz, who is, I can't remember the address, her ownership. Dear Mayor, Cahuun, et al., I am writing to you today concerning taxation and access to property that cannot be used. I'm a resident of Guilford County in North Carolina. I'm also a homeowner in Nax Head. On March 17th, Commissioner Bob Woodard and the Dare County Control Group closed Dare County to visitors. On March 20th, he extended this closure to nonresident property owners. In the past, there have been temporary restrictions to the Outer Banks. These restrictions have applied during hurricanes when the area is not safe. Residents, visitors, and nonresident property owners have been evacuated for a short period of time. During this most recent restriction, Dare County residents have been allowed to remain in their area and have not been required to evacuate. In addition, these residents have had the option of leaving their counties to seek services in other counties, as well as the state of Virginia, before returning home. As a resident of Guilford County, I cannot cross over into Dare County. The road is closed. At the roadblock, I must turn around. There is no alternative route to my home. Alternatively, Dare County residents can visit the area if they own a home and wish to stay in their home. The roads are open. Each day that I'm not able to access my home, I am paying a county and town tax rate. I'm also paying for trash removal and water. I cannot rent my home, and I'm not allowed to enter my home. I feel that this is unjust and should be rectified. Because I'm not a primary resident of Dare County, I have not participated in local elections. I do not have a voice at the table during the Board of Commissioners' meetings. I believe that the decision to restrict nonresident property owners was not given any consideration. I feel that I am being discriminated against. Many people believe that if I were allowed to go to my home in Nax Head, I would freely spread a virus. In my own home, I am following all orders that apply to the stay-at-home order. I'm going to the grocery store only when necessary and wearing a mask. I am homeschooling my children, and I am maintaining six-foot social distance from others outside of my home. My point is, I would do everything in Nax Head that I'm currently doing. I know for a fact that if I were to go to Nax Head, I would not know any of the locals to be able to get together with them and to spread the virus to them. I would keep company with my family, as I am currently doing. If necessary, I would bring my own food and stuff my refrigerator and pantry. The Outer Banks restaurants are closed, except for takeout, just as they are here. How would I be doing anything different than I would be doing in my primary home? In addition, Dare County and the town of Nax Head needs to figure out how to salvage as much of the 2020 rental season as possible. We have mortgages and bills to pay. Some of our homes are not ready for the 2020 season because nonresident property owners have been restricted from access. Red Sky Insurance Company is refusing to honor their travel insurance policy. The North Carolina Real Estate Commission has overstepped their boundaries by giving legal advice to consumers. If we cannot pay mortgages and bills or access our homes to prepare them for some sort of rental season, many homes will be foreclosed and not available for rent. This will have a dire impact on the Outer Banks economy. Please contact me to let me know what steps you will take to discount our taxes for nonuse, remove the nonresident property owner restriction, ensure that this kind of discrimination does not occur again, and lastly, reopen to visitors. Very sincerely, Susan Schwartz. Next letter is from Julie Garfinkel. I hope this finds everyone well in this challenging time. I have two comments for consideration. First, maybe a consideration for opening the county to guests could be that all weekly rentals were shortened by a day so there was extra time to third-week clean all surfaces between renters and time for the virus to also naturally die on surfaces with the extra 24 hours. As for hotels and the like, they could require a day between renters for each room. I think this, along with mask rules for all grocery stores, et cetera, would allow for an earlier and safer reentry. It's not just about individual rental homes. It's also about almost the entire economy for all residents of the Outer Banks. Secondly, I think nonresident owners should have access to their homes because they can stay at home the same as they would in the principal residence. They could do like Florida and require people from the north traveling to their Florida homes to self-quarantine for two weeks. They do not have to grocery shop after the bridge, and if they became unwell, it's unlikely they would go to the Outer Banks Hospital because their insurance would most likely work best near the principal residence. Thank you for your consideration. Yours is a difficult and unenviable task right now to find the correct address. This is from Diane Price, nonresident owner at 5507 South Virginia Dare Trail, a property available for rentals 10 to 12 weeks per year. We appreciate the decisions made today for the safety and welfare and public health of all. Regarding reopening, given the unknowns of COVID-19, we ask a key criteria in the decision continue to be the best interest of public and personal health. We understand the economic hardship imposed and are in favor of limiting guests to the Outer Banks. This being said, we are in favor of no guests being allowed, even if this means July, August, or September, when it becomes reasonable to do so. This is from Paul Stein Dorff, owner of 4801 South Virginia Dare Trail. Please consider allowing nonresident owners to access their properties a month or so before the beaches are open to renters. We need further time to prepare the properties for the rental season. Thank you. This is from Alan Miles, owner of 8606 South Old Nax Head Road. I am a nonresident property owner of a large rental house in South Nax Head. I cannot afford to hire people to do the numerous repairs and improvements necessary to maintain my house in the manner expected by not only the rental clients, but also the rental management company I use. I was scheduled to come down there for 10 days to do the required work. You closed the Outer Banks to nonresident owners the day I had planned to come there. Will nonresident owners be given permission to enter the Outer Banks before it is open to the general public? This is from John Koopa. Don't see an address. I would like to see the island opened up to nonresident owners ASAP. I'm still infuriated that we were getting ready to leave our home that Friday night to come down after work, and you announced at 6:10 PM that at 10:00 PM you were denying us access. It takes seven hours for us to drive down, and we could have been on our way and shown up, only to be denied access due to your shortsighted, callous decision. I have lost a lot of respect for all of you who voted for that. I do not know any of you, and if any of you are transplants, but it should not surprise you that we all love this place as much as you, and may want to retire there as well. You could have done things differently and more thoughtfully. Thank God our Realtor texted us and gave us a heads up. Our home is up for sale, and we have been trying to get access so we can finish work for the showings and summer rentals. This was also work we were completing from the hurricane damage. To lock us out and yet allow residents in four counties to come and go, even as far as another state, is mind-blowing. You are all very naive to think they cannot bring anything back with them. Even the naval aircraft carrier had positive tests, and you can't get more isolated than out at sea. You can stop us at the bridge and give us a path that allows us to go to our home. We can bring all of our supplies, food, et cetera, so we are not running all over the aisle. Lock us down in our own home. Give us all a two-week window now so we can get our homes ready for the summer rentals as well. We have every right- We have every right to have access as we have committed no crime that would cause us to lose access. Our taxes pay for this right. We are paying for services you all use 12 months a year, and we use them only part of the time. We pay to educate your children as well, a benefit we will never be able to use. We support many of your businesses, and many of you have become very wealthy from our support. We are asking you now for your support. Now is the time to step up and represent all of your people, not be a self-serving clam. This is not your personal feathom. Sincerely, John Kupcha. This is from Scott Southworth, Village of Naxhead. Given the very restricted number of hospital beds, we respect the decision to limit access. However, we have social distancing and safety precautions down very well in Northern Virginia. I can drive to Naxhead, truck my vehicle, and walk only to the Sound, Ocean, and Foodlands to pick up curbside food. I can sign a release form regarding that and carry it with me at all times. If I'm found in violation by the police, I can pay a fine and be ordered to evacuate. Please consider opening access for non-resident owners who need to prepare the non-rental property for hurricane season. Thank you. This is from Eugene Papulek, 100 West Soundbreeze Lane. Word commissioners, my wife and I started vacationing in the beautiful Outer Banks in 1977. We bought a parcel of land in the village of Naxhead in 1998, bought, built a house on that property in 2008. Since our retirement several years ago, we've been residing at that residence for four months each year. Their permanent residence is in Maryland. We understand the concerns of the Dare County Board of Commissioners about keeping the residents of Dare County as safe as possible during the COVID-19 pandemic. Your decision to deny access to non-resident homeowners is also understandable. However, Dare County cannot have it both ways. The Dare County Commissioners cannot collect property taxes from non-resident property owners at the same rate as resident property owners while denying the access of non-resident owners to their property. This policy is fundamentally unfair. We have a house with a 2019 property value of $714,170, for which we paid property taxes of $3,357. We have been denied access to our property and all Dare County services for one month, which represents 8.3 of our tax bill or $279. If Dare County denies us access for another month, we will expect to be refunded 16.6% of our taxes or $557. We will expect a similar reimbursement of taxes paid to the town of Naxhead. Treating non-resident property owners unfairly is not a way to attract new homeowners to the Outer Banks. There are many beautiful beaches along the North Carolina and South Carolina coastlines. None of these beach communities have discriminated against non-resident owners by denying access. Your decision to deny access while still collecting taxes at the same rate will reduce the property values of homes in the Outer Banks as future potential home buyers will find other beach properties more attractive if they actually have access to their properties.
Bobby Canales from 9202 South Old Oregon Inlet Road. Please advise me that there are state troopers and our county sheriffs located at the two bridges to prevent non-residents from entering Dare County. What is being done to those who reside in Dare and go on balance for business then come back claiming they live here? If they are not being tested every time I'm quarantining, they should not be allowed to enter. It will take one time for one to get infected, then bring it to Dare County. The word is also that there are outsiders coming to curtaut then making their way to Dare. Hopefully, there are sheriffs at the county line. This is from Suzie Walters, 415 Raceview Court. Dear Mayor Commissioners, I hope you and your families are well and safe. These are certainly strange times for all of us. I want to thank each of you for your leadership and dedication to our citizens during this time. By the time the OBX opens to visitors and guests, our town will be in tip-top shape. The Westside Multiuse Path is a welcome addition to our town and will be utilized by many for years to come. Much-needed drainage improvements continue throughout the town and will help to evade some of our flooding issues as well as our deteriorating infrastructure. And although our parks are not available for use, they are being maintained beautifully. Our public works is doing an excellent job of picking up bulk items and yard debris as many are working in the yards and businesses, not only to pass the town but to be ready for our guests. Thank you to our town manager, department heads, and all staff. Our community looks great. At your next meeting, you will be discussing the FY 2021 budget again. I hope you will take a measured approach to the process and not accidentally instill additional care in our citizens and our staff during your discussion. A reduction in forced discussion or furlough discussion has far-reaching implications for staff morale. Before taking such measures, I hope you will take a good look at future retirements and the financial impact they may have. I also hope that before taking any drastic measures that may impact individuals, you will consider discontinuing your salaries first. It would set a very positive example for our staff and community. And if additional measures are needed beyond that, I hope you will consider an across-the-board payroll percentage reduction before seeing one out individuals. Perhaps none of this will be necessary. You have at your disposal the option of using fund balance to get through this difficult time. And the last paragraph certainly applies to the current situation. Order Commissioners, policy fund balance originally adopted July 11, 2012, adoption date March 4, 2015. The Board of the Town, the Board of the Town of Naxhead recognizes the vital importance of sound financial management. The Board of the Town of Naxhead also recognizes that the precarious location of the town of Naxhead on the coast of North Carolina represents an additional threat to the financial security of the town that is not otherwise faced by most municipalities in the state. One of the primary keys to financial security is the maintenance of an adequate fund balance. Town of Naxhead's management will strive to maintain an unassigned general fund balance available for appropriation according to North Carolina General Statute 1598A, of 50% of expenditures, less bond debt, but not less than $5 million as per foreign finance statements at the end of each fiscal year. Management is expected to manage the budget so that the revenue shortfall in expenditures increases do not impact the town's total unassigned fund balance. Gas profit, economic expenditure that requires a deviation from total budget to revenues or expenditures in the unassigned fund balance can be reduced by board action. The Board also will adopt a plan on how to return unassigned fund balance back to the required level. Another course of action to deal with this crisis is to require the Dare County Terrace Bureau to begin making payments on the event site property. I can assure you nothing will happen without significant unified board pressure via your board attorney. I personally do not believe any cut should occur until this has been remedied, even if through the court of public opinion. I'm aware of the funds we borrowed from the water fund but do not have to be repaid to the water fund immediately. I encourage you to take all necessary steps to have Naxhead taxpayer money for the event site returned to our citizens. During this time of uncertainty, I hope you will continue to reassure our citizen staff that we are all in this together. Thank you for all you do to stay well and safe. Michael Marsen-Nison, he lives in Morrisville, Pennsylvania, also has property at 518 Spoon Court. I would like to ask this question to the meeting. Since I am a non-resident homeowner in Naxhead, what is being done to rebate the Naxhead and Dare County real estate taxes during the period that we are prohibited to enter the Outer Banks? One would assume we should not have to pay taxes since we cannot use our property by Dare County either. Also, the same should hold true for the water and sewage bills since we do not have use of our home. Please explain. Jim Riviera, N405 Old Oregon Inlet Road. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to comment on the extraordinary impact that COVID-19 has had on your community. We have been non-resident homeowners in South Naxhead for almost 35 years and always considered South Naxhead our second home. We spend a great deal of time at the beach, especially since we are now retired and our daughter was married there. We pay substantially more taxes to Dare County and Naxhead than we do to our other home in Wake County, despite the fact that our children attended public schools in Wake County. I fully understand the epidemiology of the COVID-19 transmission and the logic of restricting outsiders entering into the area, though I am assuming that local residents are not allowed to leave Dare County, and this would be a reservoir for potential infection. My reason for writing relates to your discussion by Town Manager Ogren on COVID-19's impact on the budget and possible solutions. I'm sure that based on the fact that non-resident homeowners are not physically in the act of this period and that the town is already collecting property taxes from them over this period, that any direct financial impact on residents will be fully absorbed by the residents and non-resident homeowners since it is fundamentally unfair to pass such costs on to families not allowed to actually join in the community response. Non-resident owners of second homes in Naxhead are already having a significant adverse impact. Taxes, utility, insurance, mortgage, loss of rent, not recoverable under current programs. There are also current costs associated with COVID-19 impacting homes, cities, and towns they happen to find themselves in. This resident tax could be in the form of surcharges similar to how homeowners pay more in the beach and ice market cost. For example, if the county is closed for two months, then the additional cost of managing the local response to COVID-19 should be passed on to the residents who actually were impacted and not amateurized across the entire tax base. This will also allow a better approach to predict the cost to residents of such incidents in the future and hopefully allow the money to be invested in the emergency healthcare system. Let's hope this nightmare is over soon and future actions also take into consideration those taxpayers actually impacted by the surge. Owen Hyatt from Chester, Virginia, also 4905 South Virginia Dare Trail, A2. Good morning. As a permanent resident property owner, why do we prohibit non-resident property owners from entering Dare County while resident property owners leave to go to work in Virginia and then return repeatedly to Dare County? Better solution is to shelter in place the high-risk group of people and bring them food, medical supplies, et cetera, they may need. Attorney General Susan Larkin, Westminister, Maryland, 406 West Green Jacket Way. As a part-time homeowner in Naxhead for nine to 10 months, will my water bill be forgiven and my taxes rebate? Excuse me, my taxes prograted. Karen Phillips from Chesapeake in 140 Bloom Cedar Drive. Please consider opening summer seasonal business on May 1st as early as possible. Sea town loss in the summer is huge for meeting mortgages and can't be recouped adequately later. As a rental cottage owner in Naxhead, I can't benefit from the PPP program because I don't have employees on payroll. But I do pay many local businesses during the season as well as the off-season to prepare for the summer. I pay a mortgage all year, a really good management company commissions for booking and taxes as well as homeowner liability, flood, and wind insurance. There are bills for electricity, cable, pool maintenance, sewage inspection, carpet cleaning, internet, propane painters, plumbers, and contractors for repairs and maintenance. Income for all these expenses are earned primarily during the summer. My mortgage company Chase will give forbearance on paying my mortgage for up to three months, but I must pay the entire whole amount of them that time. Al, I am really petrified that I won't be able to do that if tourists aren't allowed to come vacation on the Outer Banks. I have already had to return deposits for April guests that were booked. I am facing having to return deposits on the other months of guests who are prohibited from vacationing. Please consider rental cottage businesses and those that they support as extremely important to the economic health of Naxhead. Please remove the barriers promptly and allow business owners to do what we do best. Let's have a good season. Thank you. Charles Hess, Charlottesville, Virginia, in 5321 West Captain's Way. Please consider opening the vacation rental season starting June 20 or June 27 if the COVID-19 situation is capable of. Suggest you reevaluate the actual opening date as these dates draw closer with the latest data and make the decision on June 5th or approximately two weeks before you. Do not make any decision today or later this month about extending the blackout until August because it is prudent to wait for more timely data coming later in May. Robert Thomas from Carrollton, Virginia, in 3327 South Lindelane. If you want to keep things shut up until August and violate my constitutional rights, then so be it. Be prepared for additional lawsuits. You can pay my property tax for the amount of time you have declared eminent domain or whatever you want to call it. My house obviously belongs to Dare County, not me. May my God have special blessings for all of you. Bob Genius from Spencerport, New York, in 5401 South Virginia Dare Trail. Hello, I'm a non-resident owner of a Whispering Sands unit right across the street on the beach roads of the town hall. I commend what you and the county people are doing to maintain the safety of the county, the town, and the region. My wife and I have already discussed that if the data and the medical people indicate that they don't believe it's safe to be open till the summer or into the summer, then that is what should be done. We realize that this could wipe out most of our rental season this year, but if that is required, it's what is required to maintain the safety and health of the residents, and so be it. If the country isn't safe, our customers, renters, won't want to travel anyway. Do what's right for the resident population. Please face the truth. Mike Ellis, 5110 South Virginia Dare Trail. Our family purchased a home for rental purposes in late 2018. Although we put down almost 40%, if the town were to shut down and remove the entire summer from the rental program, it would be devastating to our financial situation. I'm sure there are many homeowners in a similar situation cannot afford to lose a summer of rental income, not to mention the effect it would have on the local economy. I can appreciate you as leaders trying to make decisions that are in the best interest of everyone's safety. It's my belief that waiting longer than the end of May is not appropriate. Are we as a society going to be shut down entirely every time there is a new virus? Every decision has to be weighed with a corresponding risk. Positive test numbers have to continue to rise by the mere fact that we are going to be testing more people, but the facts are that the overall death rate in the United States will continue to fall as a percentage of positive tests and will in all likelihood end up slightly north of the typical flu season. I urge you not to shut down the Outer Banks for visitors. Bill Rawls from Shelby Township, Michigan, in 5507 South Virginia Dare Trail, Unit 204. Opening to non-resident homeowners and visitors needs to occur sooner rather than later. Many cannot survive the financial burden of delaying the reopening. It would have far-reaching and long-term effects for everyone, including the locals and the local economy. Louis Collins. Don't be allowed to check on my property. I usually come down at least once per month and also stay from May to October. My home is not a rental. It's your second home. I haven't been down due to hip issues in December. I'll be hard in January, and my total hip replacement in February. We're fine now, but need to check on our home. We can drive down four hours, check on home, and leave same day. Peaceful property owners come back into town. I've been coming there since 1975. If it doesn't open soon, we will have no recourse but to put it up for sale as soon as the pandemic is over. Thank you for your consideration. Jeff Ackerman from 2600 South Bridge Lane. Good morning, and thank you for accepting my public comment electronically. First, I want to thank the Naxhead first responders and their support personnel for doing an excellent job serving our community during this difficult time. Also wish to thank Town Manager Ogren, his administrative team, and numerous Naxhead employees who report to us daily to keep our municipal government functioning. At many Naxhead residents, I listened to the Emergency Board Meeting on March 20th part from my living room. Town Manager Ogren gave a thorough overview of the action he and his team were taking to monitor potential fiscal impacts the town may face in the coming months. While I feel it is completely appropriate to look at the current and future budget to identify potential savings, I think it's far too early to discuss measures like furloughing town employees or cutting benefits. It is heartening for employees who are already terrified of this situation to hear their elected leaders suggest such options just days into the crisis. Each of Naxhead employees are part of our community. They do exceptional work, and they each count on their jobs to support their families. Naxhead has a robust reserve for times like this. Budget cuts that impact employees should be the absolute last thing on the table. Lastly, I emphasize the non-resident property owners who are frustrated at being restricted from their second home. But I believe the control group made their decision in best interest of all involved. It's evident my plan to reopen our county is imminent. I simply ask for patience from all stakeholders as we strive to get through this pandemic and turn our community back to survival. It is enjoyed for many years. Thank you for your time and leadership of Naxhead. Benjamin Brumel. Hello, to whom is my concern? Hello, I hope this email finds you well. I am writing as a resident in the village of Naxhead. I have concern that dropping the Naxhead Ocean Rescue would negatively impact the town. Townies come here with the comfort of knowing that there are ocean lifeguards on duty on the beaches in Naxhead. The Naxhead Ocean Rescue for budget reasons would be disregarding the safety of all the thousands of beachgoers who visit our beaches every summer. Would the town get conscious of cutting them from our, for budget reasons? Literally putting a price on the safety of thousands of people who visit here in the summer months? But cutting Naxhead Ocean Rescue... But cutting Aggett Ocean Rescue would also be deteriorating Ocean Rescue guards who come down here summer after summer and doing so. It would ruin the chance for guards who turn summer after summer in the future should you decide that you want to reinstate the Ocean Rescue Department. None of these guards go on to move down here and become a member of them, then become part of the local EMS, fire departments, and other jobs that contribute to the local community. Aggett Ocean Rescue has also been a launchpad for the few determined individuals to excel in the U.S. military. I do not believe this move would be in any way beneficial to the town of Aggett. Just last fall, a man was rescued in hurricane swells that would have most likely perished if it weren't for the Aggett Ocean Rescue being there. Do you consider the fact that any resident or visitor or visitor of Aggett Beaches perished in a tragic accident this summer because there was no Ocean Rescue would be a direct result of the town's decisions to cut them from budget reasons? Find a way, secure the funding, and protect the families who come here year after year. Audrey Widlock from 8523 South Old Oregon Inlet Road. Who benefits from beach nourishment? Some would say everyone, and I believe that except I think it's a waste of money. Erosion is a known fact, and those that buy in the coastal community know. However, Aggett charges landowners and special municipalities to foot the bill. You are east of the beach road and you are taxed additionally. This is not right. For those that aren't specifically beachfront, it hurts the sale of our homes for some of us. Why not just fly across the street and walk the extra 100 feet to get to the beach? I would like the city to either stop beach re-nourishment or change or charge every landowner equally. Yes, beachfront homes, rental properties, and all businesses are the main beneficiaries. But it's spread equally to everyone, wouldn't discriminate. South Old Oregon Inlet Road is a main road in Aggett. Through the years that I've been a resident, flooding has worsened in several areas. Some problem due to wetlands filled on west side for building. Once when the road was razed and repaved, the flooding spread further south in my property. Then they dug depressions and dipped our driveways, which caused it to spread past my home and caused almost constant standing water. Not good for mosquito control. You can't get to your mailbox or take out trash cans without wading through it. Water on the road is a constant hazard for traffic after rain. Being a septic tank area, I wouldn't want my children wading through this standing water. Mayor and city manager have listened to our complaints and had two projects approved in June 2019 to remedy this problem. Unfortunately, when the business did not meet the budget of funds, it was put on hold. This is a major thoroughfare for residents and vacationers and affected many. Unlike the flooding that was quickly handled in Aggett Acres neighborhood, it only benefited a few homes and headed some major dirt there. Please move this as a top priority for 2020. Mike Bartow. Owner at WS07, owner WS07. As a non-resident owner in Aggett for 18 years, as well as my wife and I, being frontline healthcare providers, I appreciate your message of respect during these challenging times. My opinion on when or how to open may be different from the masses. I don't believe in a hard date to open Aggett or other areas, including states within the U.S. This pandemic virus is here to stay at different stages of risk depending on locale. Your question about wanting us to lose the summer with an August 1st opening date is questionable at best without guidance and the decision. My personal thought is for local Deer County officials to consider the true risk in open short term and temporary timeframe of three days if owners do not display symptoms of the virus, which is primarily measured by presence of fever. Owners have a vested interest in their properties in the three-day period, but permit them to assess the condition or follow up with home projects with vendors. I can't predict when or how guests should be granted access at this time. Nowhere in current would be guiding principles. Please feel free to reach out with any questions. John Cupcha. I would like to see the island open up to non-resident homeowners ASAP. I'm still infuriated that we were getting raped. From Bob Oaks. Dear Mayor and Board of Commissioners, I think any conversation has to start with a thank you to the respective boards for making the decision based on the best information available under considerable worst-case possible scenario. There's been some time to see an additional data across the nation and see the responses and the effects play out in real time. I hope we are nearing the time when the conversation can turn to how to reignite the out-of-banks economy safely. At some point, the risk to the economy balances the public health. There is a point of no return for our local economy. Where is it and how close do you want to cut it? What would be the criteria for reopening? What is the timeline for making this a decision? If national and state leadership reopen both Deer County, what role will Aggett play? September 1, reopen. Well, why bother? Majority of your local business community will fail as a direct result of such a decision. August 1, pretty much the same. July 1, your point of no return. And the pain involved there is incredible. June 1, we can make a go of it, but why not include Memorial Day? Consider the advantage of allowing non-resident property owners back on May 1, monitoring the results for two weeks, and allowing visitors for the weekend of May 15. We will have had two months to get ahead of the curve. It's the best scenario for a successful revival of a very troubled local economy. Make no mistake, vacation rentals cease, payments to vendors cease, mortgages don't get paid, occupancy and sales tax revenue drops like a rock. There's a social cost to unemployment, and it will be paid with fractured families. Since March 17, the frontline of the out-of-banks economy, with ants working in rental homes for the summer, is ground to a virtual hole. The past 30 days where we booked $4 million in 2019, we booked $400,000 in 2020. The sales and occupancy taxes reflected on behalf of the state and the county were reduced by $400,000. These taxes are paid according to the monthly portion. Vacation rental companies and property owners have refused yet for part of March and all of April. When you start to look at the impact of refunding advancements and commissions in May, it becomes very painful. June pushes you over the edge. SBA's poncho loans are a great deal if you can deal with an evolving system. If you have work that your rehired staff can perform, the need of the SBA nor loans will carry anyone through a summer without visiting. We are to reopen the out-of-banks without a vaccine. There will be some risks. How can we manage this risk in a reasonable way and avoid killing the out-of-banks economy? Not a choice between broke and dead. Life is not without risk. The risk from the virus is still uncertain, but seems to be decreasing. The economy is certain and increasing. Mark Dickinson, Aggett In Hatters. Aren't we artificially delaying the natural progression of this virus really just delaying the curve of the virus? We have just delaying this to some point in the future and drastically destroying the OBX economy for ultimately no good reason. Leslie Erickson. Maintain social distance recommendations. Would the town consider extending beach driving if the bridge closures continue? Amanda Millie, America Hunnens. You sent me an email on March 19 stating that there is no intent to bar non-resident property owners from being there. 24 hours later, non-resident property owners were given inoutput notice to close the bridge to non-resident owners. What say does the town of Aggett have in the opening closing of the bridge? Best to my knowledge, there is no intent to bar non-resident owners from being there, despite the rumor mill and noise on Facebook. I personally am not in favor of it. John and Katie Anderson. Would the board please give non-resident property owners a tender timeframe for reentry? Certain conditions are met locally as to the virus situation. If the non-resident property owners adhere to certain best practices. Also, please advise the thinking of the board as to tentative timeframe for visitor reentry and under what conditions? This would be great for planning purposes. Evan Spivey. Good morning. I'm all for restricting visitors, including people such as myself who have a vacation home in Aggett. The question I have is, if we're not allowed to come down to Aggett for any certain period of time, why should we be required to pay the property taxes for the time we are restricted from coming? We don't have access to our property, certainly should not be paying taxes on them for that timeframe. Another from Amanda Millie. Non-resident owners are getting threats to the property. What actions are being taken to protect homes of those who can't be there? We cannot trust anyone who's currently there to check on homes due to the hostile environment. What is the plan for tax relief for those who can't utilize their home? Public health is truly the ultimate concern. Why was the bridge not closed to local residents as well? Understand the need for essentials, but the long gun Elizabeth City and pull gun from Currituck are not essential. If you want to play the public health card, play for all. Don Tensky. When the town does allow reentry, we hope that non-resident property owners are allowed in at least two weeks prior to visitors to allow members a chance to prepare homes for the season. Chris Love of 106 East Oregon Drive. We'd like to know the status of allowing property owners who are not full-time residents back in town to allow us to care for and maintain our property. Scott Southworth from the village of Aggett. Given the very restricted number of hospital beds, we respect the decision to limit access. However, we have the social distancing and safety precautions down very well in Northern Virginia. I can drive to Aggett, park my vehicles, and walk only to the sound, ocean, and food line.
I read that.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will close this comment period and again return to comments that are coming. One during the meeting so far, which I folded to care. If she can print that and we'll circle back to this before we close. The next item on our agenda is to adopt the consent agenda. I believe that is with the removal of item three. Is that correct?
The March 4th minutes was what was being removed. Is that one set?
That's the only set, I think. Yes.
May I have a little clarification if I may?
Yes, sir.
I can't find it real quick, but I know what it is. It's the one about the moving the public hearing from this meeting to the May meeting. I'm assuming that's with consent of all parties involved and the public has been notified?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Then a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the March minutes, which is...
I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended by removing the March 4th minutes.
Thank you. A motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Would it be appropriate to return those minutes to the clerk and ask the additional comments from Lee B. included?
It would. A more concise message of what he presented. It left out a lot of details such as the sewage and the parking reduction that he was addressing.
Actually, his memo in total would just be good because that's what he gave.
Okay. Addressing that memo as far as his comments would be correct.
Good. Thank you. Then we'll bring those minutes back to the next meeting for approval as hopefully on the consent agenda with those.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider a resolution authorizing the town to enter into an installment purchase contract.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing which we do need to allow for any public comment on. I believe the meeting notice, in particular the notice of this public hearing invited people to submit comments via email if they had any comments of issue submitted to the board regarding this particular item. I don't know if we received any or not. After we've had the staff presentation, I'm going to invite the presentation of any of those comments so that can be submitted as part of the public hearing.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. In July, the board adopted a resolution, a reimbursement resolution for the financing of the pedestrian path. Certain projects, for Dottie Park improvements according to its master plan, as well as fuel tank conversions. These items need to be approved by the LGC as they are real property improvements. And everything has been forwarded to them. And the final piece of that would be the resolution for the financing contract as well as the resolution approving the application for LGC approval. And these items have been included in the 2020 budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Amy? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've just checked with town staff note they have not received any comments from members of the public on this public hearing.
Thank you. In that case, before we close this, I'll ask for any comments from board members?
Just to ensure that all this is money that we have committed to prior. There is no request for any new money that we hadn't done in the past. Same that.
The amount that we're requesting is within the reimbursement resolution that the board adopted in July.
So there's nothing new since July?
The one thing that we had to add, but again, it's within the reimbursement resolution, is the location of the tank had to be moved, which was approved by the board. That caused the pump to not work. And so I believe that I asked for a budget amendment just to transfer funds within public works just to cover $700 debt we need for those tanks. But again, that was within the reimbursement resolution that the board already approved.
Thank you. This will make it abundantly clear that we're not talking about any new money. It's something that was done almost a year ago.
No, no, sir.
Correct. Thank you.
I think it's actually a little less money.
It is. It is. I think that we eliminated one of the projects that was originally intended for Dottie Park and that's the decking portion just due to the COVID-19 and kind of stopping doing capital projects. We weren't already under contract at that point, but we were for everything else. So we're only financing under what we were already under obligations for with the exception of the tank or the pump because they're actually not working.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? In that case, I believe we need to close the public hearing.
Yes, sir. Close the public hearing at this point and then more consider the resolution.
Very good. Then there being no further questions for Amy and no public comment. The public hearing is closed and a motion would be in order.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the filing of an application for approval on the financing agreement authorized by North Carolina General Statute 160A-20.
As a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion of second and further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Before we move to reports and recommendations from the planning board and planning and development directors, could we take a five-minute recess?
Did the... I said, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. There's a...
Yes.
There was a second resolution.
Excuse me. Very much. Thank you for being helpful on that. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the financing terms to be through PNC Bank at a financing rate of 2.42%, not to exceed that amount. And the amount to be financed is $1,401,396.
Thank you very much for that. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Now what I would ask is that, do we take a five-minute recess? Before we move to reports and recommendations, I think we should be able to get through the rest of this after the closed session. For break. We're going to reconvene. It has been observed, it is 10:20. The county board chair is on a live stream at 11 o'clock, I believe. No doubt, a number of those who were listening to air meeting to have discussion or of interest in the access to the county will be turning to that broadcast more than likely. We appreciate all of those who are, there are a significant number of people following the stream. We appreciate you, your interest in the activities of the town. The next item on our agenda are reports and recommendations from the planning board and the planning and development director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You all are well.
Good morning, Michael.
So very quickly, we're pursuing a KAMA access grant for Huron Street as we've pursued for the last two years, at least for Jacob Street access and Eilington accesses to make upgrades to those accesses. We are, for those that don't know, Huron Street is approximately a mile post 17 just south of the Pierview condos. Let me share my screen quickly. So this is the memo that we provided to the board. It goes through the criteria that KAMA, DCM uses to prioritize projects for grants. Obviously, again, we've been successful the last two years with two accesses. Huron Street is a little bit different where there is improved parking at the access. Where there is a, currently a crossover. The goal here would be to make improvements to both of those features. We did reach out to DCM staff to discuss the likelihood or the possibility that Huron Street would be considered or successful. They do prioritize new accesses, so this would not necessarily be the highest preference and we'd be competing against other projects that might be submitted. And we don't necessarily intend to pursue making this access ADA compliant. It would, doing so would likely reduce impact parking spaces. And there are other, there are other ADA compliant access points in the vicinity. But it's a project that we felt was appropriate to pursue at this time, given the small scope of it. Originally, when we discussed this project, project, we were thinking of a, of a local match as part of the CIP. However, given circumstances, we're going to consider looking at a tourism impact grant if those are available. But I would say the match is yet to be determined, obviously, given current conditions. But we really wanted to come before the board to discuss this location, any, any feedback that the board had about this location. There are, and I listed these in the memo, there are other eligible project types. Generally, we focus on beach access improvements, but there are other project types that we could pursue from land acquisition, acquisition or easement acquisition to boat launch facilities. So again, we hope the board has some thoughts regarding this and we'll go from there.
Michael, what would be the timing on a typical grant application like this from now until the time new of awards to then planning the project to sort of, sort of looking forward and wondering about when, when we might know this? And is this a, assuming you could get the matching funds? Is this a fiscal year 2021 or is this more likely fiscal year 2022?
So the pre-application is due a month from today. They pushed that deadline out, I believe by a month. We would not normally know about the award until August, I believe. And if you recall with Eilington, I believe in September or October of last year, we were doing a public meeting to receive public comment on that application before we made final application. And then we did not receive, for Eilington, we did not receive the contract until January, I believe. And we're currently programming construction for Eilington, looking at that to open up September, October timeframe. We're thinking about permitting for that over the summer. So you could anticipate that this could be, the construction wouldn't start on this walkover until not even this coming fiscal year, but the fiscal year after, given how long the process is in terms of the contract. So 21, 22 fiscal year construction would start. But I would expect that DCM would want to see at least more clarification on the match, whether that's local funds or the grant before, you know, we receive final approval. So I would say by September, October, we would want to firm up any, any match if we were successful.
Approval now to start a process that would hopefully conclude in more normal circumstances. There's, there's enough time that would allow for, for that to happen. Board members, any questions for Michael?
Two things. One, how many parking spaces are you expected to lose?
You know, it depends on whether or not we make it ADA compatible. I believe, and apologize, I'm looking at the memo right now. I believe if it were to be made ADA compliant, I think you could expect to lose at least two, if not three, parking spaces. But I think our goal would not be making it, not to make it ADA compliant because of the proximity of other ADA compliant accesses. And whether or not that affects, you know, the likelihood of us being awarded the grant, I think is a question.
And one more thing, Mayor, just to be totally transparent. It's the Coastal Resources Commission, which I'm part, has nothing to do with the grant applications or awards given by DCM.
Thank you for making that clarification. Any other questions for Michael? Do we need to take action on this?
I don't believe so. I think it's, you know, your consensus of support is, is, gives us direction to go forward.
Great.
I'd like to be involved in discussion.
Yes.
I would say I personally am against moving forward. I'm personally against spending any taxpayer money or committing any taxpayer money in the future right now until we have a better sense of situations that face us, particularly with budget items. So I mean, if there's consensus, I want to dissent from the consensus. If there's a vote, I'm going to vote.
No, understood. Thank you very much. In that case, without taking your vote, I'll go around and ask the commissioner what your thoughts are.
Are we able to apply now to go and get the free application in without committing to the funds?
Believe it.
That way it'd get it, it'd get us later on into the year so we can maybe have a better understanding of fiscal impact?
Is that correct, Michael, that we are not obligating funds at this point?
As far as I'm aware, we wouldn't be obligating any funds at this point, but we'll confirm that with DCM. And just, I can't imagine that we would be the only community that would be in this situation. So we'll, we'll verify how, what type of commitments they need at this point, you know, and that we will properly hedge any, any commitment of local funds or even grant funds that we don't yet have.
I need to submit a final one as part of this. That, there's another step to this.
For listeners who may not have heard Andy just now, if we took this step, we would subsequently then be invited to take the formal application. Correct. The next step of the process. Thank you. Commissioner, please.
I'm okay with applying at this time. I'm going to be looking at the budget pretty closely about how we commit our funds. So as long as we're in that step of not committing, but just applying, I'm okay.
Thank you. Mr. Sears?
I'm good with applying for a grant.
Great. Then in that case, there's dissent with a, there's a consensus with one dissent. Or proceeding forward, keeping an eye on any commitment and letting the board, you know, weigh in before town funds are committed.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any, anything else, Michael?
No, thank you.
Right, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is new business, which are committee reports. I want to ask board members, are there any committee reports to be made?
Got a email from the Gennett's peer advisory committee from Michael Remage. Talked about the pier obviously closing on March 17th, the day it had been instructed to cancel or reschedule all programs in reference to through May 15th. Beyond that, right now.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
From a tourist bureau perspective, I guess a couple of things. The Budget and Finance Committee met yesterday. I'm not part of that group, but their recommendations will be presented to the full board tomorrow. I understand there are some substantial cuts in there that will be proposed. That's one. Second, I know the public safety with the town is very concerned about the status of South Beach Grill and the fact that it's an attractive nuisance. The doors are wide open, the windows are wide open. And I've been informed by the executive director as of yesterday, they do have a contract to demolish the building, but it's from an outside vendor and they can't get here right now. So they have, they have not taken any, not made any decisions to close the doors or anything that was supposed to be demolished. And just briefly, in response to one of the letters we received, my understanding from the board is, and this can change, but, and Mayor, you may be part of this, but that there's no interest in the tourist bureau negotiating any sort of settlement with the town as far as it relates to money being paid back or property transfer until after a decision is rendered on what to do with the event site. Although that could be changed at some future date, but the last decision I'm aware of is that nobody's going to make a decision at the tourist bureau about reimbursing the town, transferring property until a decision's made about the development of the event site.
And all of the discussion, all of that task force or group that was discussing that has been suspended for the time being.
The, I'm talking, I talk about the money part. It's a tourist bureau board effort, which is not going to do anything until our group, the subcommittee, works. And we're not working right now.
Correct. So we, so that, that money part is pushed forward to an indefinite time at this point.
Unless we reinvent that process.
Mr. Van Bage, just offer one comment in regards to the vendor coming in from outside. The county is allowing vendors to come in and do demolition work. All they got to do is get a pass from the county and that would be allowed, which, wanted to pass that along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any reports? I will, as a member of the control group, let you know the control group has met, the control group is not meeting today. The control group did not meet Saturday and Sunday. I think there was one other weekend when it did not meet. Other than that, the control group has met every day since the, since the first day of the emergency. The evidence. There's been, everybody's been in a holding pattern. There've been daily reports from the health director about the numbers statewide, countywide. There've been reports from various towns about how they are addressing the issue, including the form of their meetings and their activities at town hall inspections, et cetera. But there's been no new action of any significance since the bridges were closed to the rest of the property owners. There has been some, there's been some discussion about having a discussion about what the steps are toward reopening the beach. The chair, Bob Woodard, has asked that the control group members assemble their thoughts and that discussion could begin at the end of this week. And if it didn't begin then, it would be a full discussion next week about what those steps are. Have asked the health director and the emergency management director to assemble any information they may have available that would be useful to the, for we to make a decision, understanding that other things continue to happen with the governor and other government activities. And so it's not, still not clear into what circumstances we'll be projecting any kind of action at this point. But I wanted you to know that in addition to the comments that we're hearing from the public, that there is a beginning of the development of plans to reopen.
There's been a lot of data thrown around in public comment today. To my knowledge, there haven't been dates thrown out by the control group or anybody else.
No, and, and the reason for that is that we don't have any data for which projected days.
I agree. I just don't know where these people are getting these pie in the sky dates. I just wanted to.
I heard August mentioned a couple of times.
I do too.
And I don't, I had never heard that date before. I don't know where that came from.
That's why I wanted to get on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda then is the Board of Commissioners, I'm sorry. It's new business, many reports and it's next, the update discussion on COVID-19.
Thank you. There are three things that I, under this agenda item, I'd like to discuss with the board. The first is a resolution that you have in your packet that speaks to the waiving of fees. Part of this was, the board directed us to, or advised that the board wanted us to not collect some of these fees prior to this executive order. But because some of these, these fees are part of our consolidating fee schedule, we, we ask that you approve this waiver or resolution waiving the fees that are listed in the resolution that authorizes fees associated with non-payment and reconnection for utility services, debit and credit card and e-check, I guess, convenience fees also be waived from June 30th, 2020 date. That's what the executive order requires that for the utility services. You can extend the credit card fees longer if you wish. One thing I, that brought my attention yesterday, the county manager has a. I, that brought to my attention yesterday, the county manager is requesting from the towns that, of course, the county collects taxes from, for all the towns except for us, that today's the deadline for list, for property tax listing that coincides with tax date, April 15th. He has heard from some attorneys that handle this, they can't get hold of their clients, they're having to do work by email or by mail, and it's, it's created a hardship. So I don't know if we should, the request would be that we waive the discovery fees of a listing fees for, for listing your property tax, personal property tax. For us, it's about five or $6,000 if we were to forgive those fees. I don't know if that's something you'd be interested in doing. Okay, the, of the county and the other towns are, it would be difficult for us to not do that now. They're, they would have to record them or collect them just for us. They would pass them on to us and then we could collect those fees. But if you're inclined to do that, I think you could do that under separate action or we could include it as part of this resolution.
For you, Mike, what are your thoughts on waiving the?
Yes, I would like to waive. And just to clarify for everybody, it's the business personal property tax listing that's due today, not the general property tax list. The business personal property. There's a separate tax on it. Waiving the fees.
And I think we have consensus on that. Liv?
Just to add a little motion is necessary.
Okay. Thank you. That motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion adopting the resolution authorizing fees being waived with the inclusion also of the business personal property tax, like says.
Thank you. Motion. I'm seconding further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Thank you. Then we're back to the resolution. Authorizing fees waived.
That was just adopted.
Okay. Thank you for including that.
Okay.
But you take care of all those fees. The next is the consideration of the emergency paid sick leave policy. That's a policy that's been mandated. It describes how we, for those that are affected by coronavirus, how we include that into our family medical leave back policy. Town attorney has worked extensively with us and other of his clients. So I'm going to ask him to explain this.
So there's been a lot of talk, of course, about the stimulus bill, but before that was adopted, the federal government enacted the families' first coronavirus relief act, and that had two significant impacts on the town, one of which was it mandated that family and medical leave be extended to all employees of the town who had worked for at least 30 days for a very simple qualifying reason. Second thing was it also adopted an emergency paid sick leave policy that is available to all employees of the town regardless of the length of their employment. These mandates became effective on April 1 this year based on Department of Labor guidelines. So what we've done is we've prepared a policy to govern both the emergency paid sick leave, which mandates that employees be given at least two weeks or 80 hours of paid sick leave. There's a formula for how you calculate what that is for a part-time employee, but for a full-time employee, it's based on their usual compensation. Those, those leave benefits are available if an employee is required, is unable to work because of one of six specified reasons, all listed in the policy. The second thing that this policy does is it also provides for the extension of the family medical leave act to allow employees to take protective leave under that act if they've worked for at least 30 days and are unable to work because of a single qualifying reason, which is listed there in the policy as well. Basically, that's the one that indicates that they are unable to work because of the need for leave to take care of a child whose school is closed or because their daycare provider is unavailable because of the COVID virus concerns. So this policy is, tracks the requirements and mandates of these two federal acts. It also expires on December 31 of this year as provided for by the, by the act which enacted it. And so I recommend that the board take action to adopt this policy, which will of course be added to and become a part of the personal policy.
Then for the purposes of discussion, the motion would be in order to adopt.
Yes, sure.
John, under B, the duration of compensation, second point, can you explain that a little further after the 10-day period?
So this relates, B relates to the emergency FMLA leave. The emergency FMLA leave that is mandated, that is required first provides that an employee, that the first 10 days of leave can be unpaid. However, if they qualify for the emergency paid sick leave, they can use that to compensate themselves or to be compensated during those first 10 days. After those first 10 days, an employee is entitled to receive compensation for the remainder of their FMLA period if taken for this one specific purpose, and the compensation is based on that formula there. Two-thirds of the employee's regular rate of pay capped at $200 per day. I don't know if there's any employees that make $200 a day now, but if there was, that would be the maximum they could get. Otherwise, they would receive two-thirds of their regular pay for the remaining 10 weeks of FMLA leave. In addition, an employee who has already taken some FMLA this year, such as for, because they have another serious health condition or because they had to take care of a family member that has a serious health condition, the weeks of leave that they've already taken would be deducted from their leave period under this policy. So if they only have three weeks of FMLA left, they would only be eligible for three weeks of pay, of family medical leave under this new provision.
Yes, ma'am. I heard you say everything about A being mandated. I never heard you say B, being mandated.
Okay.
Okay. So in that sense, we're bad about this whether we adopt it or not.
That's correct. One of the things about the family medical leave act requires, it poses a lot of different obligations on a covered employer, one of which is you have a policy that complies with the act. And so for that reason, I think it's important not just to follow the mandates of law with regard to giving a leave, but also to have a policy that governs the grant.
Thank you. Further questions for John?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Good motion. I'm second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Clive?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I also want to talk to the board about the impact that coronavirus has had on our, both our remaining year's budget and then look ahead to next year's budget and share with the board some of the assumptions that we've made as we start to prepare our budget. Also, as you well know, when we're looking at next year's revaluation year, the revenue neutral rate, I want to talk a little bit about that, how we calculated that and the impact that that could have on our budget as well. First, with the remaining months of this year, we've estimated a loss, revenue loss for the, for the last, I guess, for this year, for fiscal year 20, $1,459,294. And the assumptions by which we've come up with that are, we're projecting that we're not going to get any occupancy tax revenue for April, May, and June. We're projecting that we will receive 33% of the normal sales tax revenue for April, May, and June, assuming another $100,000 loss in land transfer. And permit revenues are static right now. We're still issuing permits, although I'll show you in the next slide that we're estimating that the issue will be down $100,000. And those fees, right now, our actual farm collection rate is 99.75. Of course, there's obvious concern that we're not going to see that collection rate next year. One good thing that there is, is that today, we traditionally budget conservatively every year. And before the pandemic, we were up some in revenues overall. The, the land, I mean, you can see April, May, and June, that, that makes up the land share of that 1.4 million. Those three months of loss were, were, cost us $1.2 million. And the other $100,000, land transfer, down $100,000, building permit fees. And that's how we came up with a loss of $1.4 million. So I, I've got, I've given the board, and I've got copies of it if you need it, the list of items that I'm prepared to, or how I plan to respond, hope to get to that, make up to $1.4 million in loss. If any of you need copies of that, I can give it to you now.
This is the, is this the same one you emailed to us?
You sent that to us a week ago?
Yes, or well, probably. Yeah.
But we got it, but that did they?
The, I'm not proposing that we not have lifeguards on the comments with kind of the assumption that's been made that we weren't going to have lifeguards. I, I'm looking at, right now, we're looking at 50%. And that, but that's delayed. We're not bringing on the guards until we need to bring on the guards. So that, I'm for, that 106 would assume that we're only paying for the remaining year, so that's how much we would save from this year. If we're at 50%, it could be more.
And part of that is due to the fact that a lot of our lifeguards are formed from Canada and cannot get in. That has nothing to do with us. It has to do with the fact they physically can't get.
And, and my, well, hope that not, of course, is action, but there's about 21 of those J1Bs, the employees that we have, that I believe that the, they're next, they're not permitted in right now, of course, in the, in the next day, just for them to know whether or not they're coming, may allow them. And if they come, if they're allowed to come, I have a sense that that means that the visitors will come. If they don't come, it's going to be because we haven't been opening up yet. So in some, some of my thinking is that that may somehow work, partly work itself out. But like I said, ordinarily, we already have guards getting prepared and ready. Right now, we don't. And I'll continue to delay them coming until we need them to be here. That's some savings. And you mentioned that we have got the Johnny Park deck project, not a lot. Recycling, I'm, I'm making, I want to talk, I forgot under my agenda later, with $195,000 in contract for picking up recycling, plus the vulnerability of recycling, if, if, we need to talk about that later, because summer, the summer trash schedule starts May 1st. Contract with, out of Bank Solomon begins May 1st. They have agreed to, and we have to give a 30-day notice if we want to get out of that contract. They have agreed to not hold us to that. We made a decision today that we're not going to recycle, then we can get out of the contract with 15-day notice. But there's business reduction, traveling, not recommending, we don't hire the, the cartwheels, not hire a seasonal bathhouse cleaner. We've some savings by not having a part-time customer service representative work. We, we had budgeted some funds for part-time building inspector, which obviously we don't need. Some night in uniforms. We had, we had scheduled to get the lights in town hall all switched out to LED. We're not going to do that. Got some supplies, some maintenance. We can reverse the, we've already made the payment from, to the water fund, windmill point. We were, if we were to reverse that, take a year from that, that would save us $76,000. We made $63,000 in claims FEMA for Dorian expenses. We, we'll get those back and that'll be that value. Tax valuation for higher than we estimated, that's some savings there. A bit more income, interest income budgeted. I think it's hard to read. We're not, my budget next year for 2021 won't use any home balance. But this year's budget, we had, the approved budget, all for $411,000 used to home balance. That obviously comes, shows, comes out of last year's budget carryover to this year. If, if we don't use home balance next year, then we'll recognize that savings, at least in the audit this , this year. In-house, we'll record the board meetings. Sales tax, or utility sales tax has been higher, that, that savings. We've got some insurance savings. We've sold quite a few carts, more than budgeted. Thankfully, we're seeing a fuel savings. FIP fees are down, of course. FIP fees for the months of April, May, and June are going to be January, February, March-type numbers. And then from there, it's just amounts of money from, that we were able to save. Probably one of the most significant there being the health insurance in, but considerably. So that's how I came up with the saving of $1.4 million in this year's general fund. I guess, I guess the question or the direction there for, is are you comfortable with the assumptions that I've made determining how much revenue is breaking up the shore?
What was your projection on flexing up on property tax?
Well, that next year.
For next year?
Right. That, we had, we had, the lowest we've ever collected is 97.7. And so we, we'd be 97.5. That's kind of the number we've been going off of flexions of 97.5%. But there's a deeper discussion as part of that because that will reduce our share in the future. So that, that, if we only collect 97.5%, there's a loss on what we traditionally collect. But then the, the shared revenue is partly based off of that. So we could lose additional funds because they, they take that number that we, the left, that we, you know, we're budgeting to collect, and that's what our shared revenue is based off of. So we've discussed, staffs discussed, if we budget what we normally would, and then it could be about $200,000 difference between 99.75 and 97.5, about $200,000. We make that $200,000 up, just to keep our position. Right. And if things inflated doing that, it probably didn't sound right, but it keeps our, our levies closer to what it actually is.
The philosophical value behind that is, is the less money a unit of government taxes, there's an assumption the less money it needs. So there's a transition, and it was done that way on purpose, that those people that lowered their tax rates also received less shared revenues. So that's how the whole thing was developed. And was that the right model? I'm not sure. But it was done that way so that, as I said, I'm just repeating myself. The assumption was made that if you don't need much in taxes, you don't need much in shared revenue.
It might be a good time now to talk about the, the value of next year, how we come up with the revenue neutral rate. Our, our new valuation at 100% is just under $3 billion. It's 2, 2,977 million dollars. The revenue neutral rate for that is 25.7. Right now, we're at 31, 31%.
The tax, a revenue neutral rate automatically has a half-deck tax increase built into it, doesn't it?
Well, if you take that 100% of that, I'll say 3 billion. What the county advises us is that there are going to be some appeals. And so that $3 billion, what they advised us is assume that 5% of your value will be appealed and come off. So if we do that again, it reduces our levy. And what we projected and what we're recommending is using 2% of that. And what, what that also does, if you, if you pay And what, what that also does, if you, if you pay 5% off, your tax rate is going to be higher. Your revenue neutral rate will be higher because you've lowered the levy. So you've got to raise the tax rate to collect the same amount of revenue. And that's where I think you can get some artificial growth in the new, in the new value. And I think that's where you can artificially inflate your revenue neutral rate. You make the assumption that your levy is going to be lower based on the field. We, we think it's more realistic to estimate 2%. And that's, that's about what we lost off of the, 2013. When we went through, we got before we went back to look and said, well, how, how much, how much can we lose in appeal if it's more on 2%? And I don't know if that answers your question or not, but there's also a growth rate that's determined. The general statutes require that you incorporate a growth rate in determining your revenue neutral rate. And what, what that means is from 2013 to 2021, the tax base has grown. It grows by an amount every year. You add property, you add new development. And for us, that growth rate is, is determined at 0.89%. There is a growth rate in our revenue neutral rate of 0.89%.
Compared to 20, went back to 2013, but that was part of a depression area reevaluation. This is not, well, the reality is right now, we're at a depression rate. But when these rates were set, we weren't. But there's probably going to be a lot more appeals with a lot higher values, especially now.
And I don't know how they're going to handle that because, but your, my house two months ago was probably worth a lot more than it is today. I'm not going to sell it today. It's going to be difficult. So I, I don't know how they're going to deal with the timing of that. Your, your rebalance come out in the middle of the pandemic. It's an interesting, especially for us, I think the decision is, do we, do we knock off 2%? Or do we knock off more? Right now, we're recommending 2%.
Question, isn't it past time to request, um, a revale? I thought it was in, uh, the appeal. I mean, aren't we past that time?
People couldn't get here, should that, may not.
I thought it was in February. I thought the appeal date ended in February.
He's looking at, probably right. If that's the case, then I guess we've got, longer text to determine those deals.
They've had scheduled. People could, people could have filed, but they not, may not have been scheduled based on all conditions.
And I'm talking about the application, I mean, and they could be hearing of that.
This, according to state statute, um, it can be appealed within 30 days after the date of the initial notice of value on their frequently asked questions website.
Question I would have is, I would contact the county and ask them how many deals have been filed and have they all been adjudicated? Charlie?
Hold on. We asked, we, we emailed the county and asked that, and they said they tried to let us know something this week.
Maybe we wait until that answer to find, answer the question of how much we reduce.
Two.
So going back to, uh, next year's question. The, uh, assumptions that I'm making going into next year are pretty conservative as well. And I think these track along pretty well. We, we reached out to the first year to find out what their projections, projections were. And ours tracked pretty well and maybe a little more conservative in some areas. But we're projecting sales tax at 50% for July and August, 75% for September. Like you can see, 25% for July, 50% for August, 75% for September. And then the assumption is we're back at 100% in October through the end of the year. It's a crystal ball, I know, and it's difficult to come up with deep figures. And, you know, there's also concern that we could get back into this in, in, in the fall. And we have cases that return. And we've got land transfer tax down 75% of the first quarter. So that puts us right back at about $1,500,000 loss for next year. And again, you know, I'm, I'm interested in your feedback on the assumptions.
Can you go back to that, just long enough for me to ask a question? You asked the county and Dave Clausen this question also, didn't you?
Yes. Yes, um, county is looking at, from what I understand, through different budgets, there's no growth in anybody's budget, any of them. Managers' discussion right now, no growth. But there is, I think, some feeling that it's not going to be, the, the effects aren't going to be as costly as maybe we're predicting. There's, and I don't know if that's a wait-and-see approach, you know, if that's, let's wait and see, we get through this year. We've got time to determine what happens next year. My thinking is we, we can always put money back in the budget if revenue exceeds expenditures. That's the attitude I've taken in putting my budget together for next year. I'd rather cut now at live than to assume that, you know, things are going to be normal and then have to start cutting after we get into the year.
When you have to assume normality at some arbitrary future date, that's a total guess of what that is at this point. Whether it's October or November or whatever it is. But that is a good argument for, you know, not using the fund balance at the beginning to make a cut. Because if you get another round and you haven't returned to normal of 100% in October or whatever, then you, you're in the middle of the fiscal year and you still have your fund balance in tax that you can use at that point.
I, I, I think your numbers for the remainder of this year are a lot more conservative than what the tourist bureau is going to use. Not a lot, but in a comparative scale, more conservative. And I think you're closer than the tourist bureau is. I mean, and for this, I think the, the big issue is going to be, well, obviously, the big issue is going to be when can we open? But even after we open, there's going to be all sorts of new standards on like restaurants and, uh, you know, restaurants probably will be lucky to have three quarters full of their normal capacities with new standards. So any sales tax or meals tax they were looking at coming from restaurants, I think we need to look at with sharp eyes.
I think everybody that's pushed the limit on overseeing are going to be having to reduce those numbers a lot in order to maintain more distance.
Well, my question on the other end is not just their, their capacity. Even if, even if there's a return to normal, terms of people being able to move, go back to work, shop, and all of those things. And, you know, by July 1, it's involved, you know, whether it's staged or whatever, let's say July 1, the, the brakes are off. We're a discretionary, I mean, everything here is discretionary. People have lost income. To what extent, A, are they going to take a vacation in July, August, or September? And then if they go on vacation, to what, are they going to spend in restaurants compared to what they would otherwise? Or are they, if they can manage to get themselves on vacation, are they going to get here and be extremely conservative about what they do?
They're not discretionary, but all the discretionary.
Yes, everything.
Recreational spending, you know, they may come to the beach, but they may not have the money to go do go-karts or put, or any of those other discretionary things.
No, bookings are up this year over last year. And therefore, we can make an assumption that those people are coming unless the control group gets into a certain period of time where those real estate companies have to seek the money back from the owners and reimburse the guest, um, unless there's some insurance that may or may not come into play. But right now, bookings are up. So really, the wild card in this, or the X factor, is when are you going to reopen?
Well, I'm starting to see cancellations too. I mean, I'm starting to see July cancellations, which realtors may not see because their terms are different. But there are people starting to say, we've lost our jobs and we will not be coming on vacation.
And the, the, there are very specific things in the agreements about cancellations that by and large, most cancellations are covered by insurance. And so we're going to see how the insurance company plays that. Because about 90% of the people, it's an opt-out. You get insurance when you rent, or unless you opt out. About 90% get a 10% dump. So those that opt out, you know, you're talking about a, a, a 10% factor. But I would believe, what I know about real estate companies, if somebody wants to cancel, they're going to try to work with people the best they can because, um, you know, it's a bad situation. We're in hard times and everybody wants to try to accommodate as much as possible. I mean, they, they won't bid well. So, but, you know, so, so at, at least right now, the X factor to me is when it's going to open. Because if it opens, we know when the bookings start and are, the people are coming. I agree with you, though, those elastic types of things, like the sales tax, et cetera, et cetera, are going to be severe in what people's bid money on.
Was there additional guidance for the manager at this point, based on what was presented to that?
Could you tell me the thinking behind not presenting a budget May, first meeting in May versus the second meeting in May?
Um, yes, it's got, uh, I've got a voice recorder up here to discuss. And it's, it's simply because if, if anything, if there's any determin, determinations made, the longer I can wait to present you a, a clearer picture, I could better for, for us. Meaning, I present you the budget in May 1st, which was, uh, let me see, May 3rd, which was the original plan. I'm proposing it May 20th. I don't know how much is going to happen in this two weeks, but it gives me the ability to use that time to, to paint a clear, cleaner picture. I, I can present to you the budget May 1st, May 3rd, um, and, and we can adapt from there. I'd rather have the time to, to have as much knowledge and information as I possibly could before I present you. I realize that takes two weeks off of your review.
And it doesn't leave any time for a second workshop if needed.
That second workshop if needed is kind of a, that's the first workshop.
Yes, that's the first workshop before public hearing. But if you have, you have time after the public hearing for additional workshops. And I, the, uh, from the 20th, from May 20th to June 3rd, I put May 27th because that was the second budget workshop in the original plan. There's no reason it has to be May 27th. It could be that Monday and Wednesday of that week. It would be next two Mondays. I think there is time to put two budget workshops together before the 3rd and, and obviously time after June 3rd.
I, I don't have a concern about going, yeah, again, I don't have any special knowledge. Even though I'm on the control group, that discussion hasn't been had about opening. And my suspicion is that either going to break or not somewhere around the end of the month. First of that, in terms of just, and the momentum seems to be that, in all things, and given where we are, being at the middle of April, that it's somewhere around the end of April 1st and 10th, that Webb's question begins to be answered about when are we opening up? And had the budget presentation on May the 20th, that would give you time to react to that. Otherwise, you're preparing a budget, yeah, not knowing what that is and whether there's any information of value with knowing that. That's, that's the only, that's the only caution I have. Otherwise, you can, you could do an earlier budget and potentially have a lot of, a lot of amendments to it between, in May the 20th.
And my suggestion would be that that meeting not be a night meeting. If you're going to present a budget that needs to be presented during the day where there's enough time, not at the end of the day when everybody's tired. That's him, my suggestion.
And also, if, if we don't have anything for the mid-month meeting, I just assume that'd be in the morning as well.
Yeah, sure. That's just my thought. I don't think a budget should be hurried through at 7 o'clock in the evening.
If we're going to get it later, I could offer a couple of suggestions. Of course, I have four. I think staff's answered two of them, but I'll repeat them anyway, which is revenue versus expenditure, which I hope we're doing everything we can to recognize that we're not going to get revenue. You know, and I think we've done that. And then expenditures, I hope that we keep our expenditures down as much as possible. And I think we're trying to do that. Um, the next is, I was, I said, no fund balance. Well, you presumed that, but, and I, and I appreciate that, and I think the mayor said it exactly right. If we don't use it, we've got opportunity later, we have to. But the last two would be, in order to balance the budget, I would suggest two things. Well, we already know we're going to put capital on hold, we're doing deferred maintenance, et cetera. But I would not like to see any movement of any capital money into the operating budget to balance the budget. If that makes any, does that make sense? Did you, or do I need to explain that for?
A little bit, yes, please, if you don't mind.
Okay, I mean, basically, capital is physical. And operating is mostly personnel cost. So I would hate to put one-time capital facility cost to balance salaries, which are ongoing. I mean, it's, it's a false way of trying to, I mean, we'd be digging a hole. And that, I think we're better off not trying to move capital to operating to balance our budget. And then within the operating budget, I hope that we're not moving operational items with gas or whatever into personnel costs. That op, within the operating budget, those items that aren't personnel costs shouldn't be shifted over to pay for personnel. That's just my, my personal, I'm not obviously giving direction, but that was what I would be saying at a, at a budget.
At a budget workshop.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Yeah, I had an item under my agenda personally, but this now may be the proper time to bring it up since it's a budgetary item.
Yes, certainly.
Um, of all people in this board, I probably love fireworks better than anybody you know. And I think they're really important. And I think the last time we cut them was due to economic circumstances. And I think, you know, did not serve us well. However, I think our new reality is changing. I don't think getting back to normal is going to mean getting back to normal. It's going to be a lot different. And I think we need, as a community that has visitors here, we don't need to encourage mass gatherings of people at this time. And I would like to see us cut the fireworks out of this current year's budget. Because if we get people back, we don't need to have people congregating in huge areas like they're going to do around wherever we have the fireworks at this time. I just think we need to be a little bit more cognizant of what our responsibility is to our community and our visitors at large.
Yeah, I'm, 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 early on things, if, if we don't have fireworks happening, when do we need to cancel our contract? What is it going to take to get out of that contract? I, I believe we have 30 days. There's, I believe we have until the end of May, right around the end of May. But that, that doesn't mean. But that doesn't mean you have to wait, it just can get out of the contract.
To me, for this year, given the uncertainty and given the flare-ups that may or may not occur, I just think it's not the time to be encouraging fireworks gathering. And that's a hard one for me to say, but I just think that we need to have more responsibility in how we encourage people to gather or not gather.
But what did you say the answer was about canceling the contract?
It's thirty days, so I believe it's right at the end of May. It's not thirty days from July 4th because you have, there's some lead time left to that. And they have to, they have to get, rent the trucks and all the overheads they have to take care of. So I think it's the 29th, right at the end of May.
Appreciate what you're saying. I can't make that call yet. I'm just not, I'm not comfortable. I mean, I'd like to use all the time we have available to make that decision. I understand, I appreciate that.
Well, I'm not doing it for the economic benefit. I'm doing it for the.
No.
Welfare of public safety. And we may have additional restrictions placed upon us that would prohibit us from having a gathering such as that.
Indeed, I know that.
On your May agenda?
Yeah.
May 1st agenda?
Yes, yes.
I don't want to wait till, I don't like waiting till the last minute. I think that's fair to the vendors.
Right, it would be, nor to the public. Right, so before we leave this, any other guidance for Cliff? Appreciate all those comments here. You know, I know it's painful. I know that there will be some residents who are concerned about cuts in one program or another. I frankly have to say, I like taking a conservative approach at this point of what the manager's done with the budget at this point.
Oh, with the budget, or do we need to discuss recycling?
No, I don't, I wouldn't ready to leave that. I'm trying to wind that up. But it's recycling, it's further down, but do you want to bring it into this discussion, Cliff?
I can.
Let's, I think that would be appropriate. It's out of order. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, all right, okay, cool.
As I said, the, as you know, the contracts is we have to give thirty days notice if we were going to cancel our recycling program. Our base disposal, Outer Banks Holland, understands under the circumstances, they're not going to hold us to that thirty days if you made the decision to cancel recycling today or suspend it. And we hope that we wouldn't, we wouldn't be committed to this year's sponsor next year. When I put the package together Thursday, I learned some information about recycling after that time. We actually learned some right up until this morning. The company that the state was looking to try and, the company that takes our recycled materials, is, they couldn't find a place to reach market on it, but they did have facility enforcement. At the time I put this together, I believe the, their cost is on a sliding scale. Depending on how much volume is worked is how much the processing fee is dictated. Right now, it's the worst it could possibly be. It was ninety-five dollars a ton. And to me, that was an easy call. And that's just for them to accept it. They didn't include the cost of the hauling. But, you know, my thing, it just doesn't make the business sense as much as it makes environmental sense. When the, when the company RDS realized that, that we could, they found out that we could continue to incinerate. The state has given us, the way I read the letter is it sounds as though we have the choice. We can continue to incinerate. So that, that option doesn't change anything. We could continue to incinerate. Outer Banks Holland with, owner of the 195 and seventy dollars a ton for materials we carry down. Again, when I was looking at this, I was looking at the hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that it would save on the budget. But my recommendation has been that we suspend the program. Even though I believe that our citizens want to recycle, and they want the convenience of the recycling program. What I've learned since, since that, since RDS found out they're so far overpriced, they dropped their tonnage price to forty-five dollars a ton without glass and fifty-seven dollars a ton with glass. And I just don't believe there's any way we could consider forty-five dollars a ton because I'd be lying if I told you I can keep glass out of recycling. All the education in the world, I don't believe we're going to keep glass out of those who can. So I learned today that the, and again, that fifty-seven fifty per glass is just for them to accept it. So we would have to have two different contracts if we were to go with this recycling. We would have to pay them for the tonnage, and then we'd have to pay Outer Banks Holland to haul it. And they would charge us twenty-three dollars and eighty cents a ton. So with the three hundred and twenty, excuse, five hundred and seventy-nine, five hundred and seventy-nine tons that we collect, we'd be paying eighty-one dollars and thirty-six, oh, excuse, we'd be paying eighty-one dollars and thirty cents per tonne to have it recycled versus the seventy dollars a tonne we're paying to have it incinerated. The, the contract with Outer Banks Holland for them to, because they're so close, it wouldn't change. There'd be, well, the net impact wouldn't change. Right now, we're paying a hundred and ninety-five thousand for them to carry it to be incinerated. We, based on the three hundred and twenty-two tons they collected, we'd be paying a hundred, almost a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for recycling. But it's almost a wash if we continue on the beach road, the May to October program. What that doesn't consider is, and I don't know all this information, I would need time to talk through this. We have not been penalized for contamination or rejected loads. RDS, I believe, that's going to become a factor if we were, if we were going to recycle. And I don't have enough information at this time to tell you what I think that, what the impact is that would be. Fifty-seven dollars a tonne of glass, that doesn't include, that doesn't, that doesn't consider a contaminated load. That, you know, if we had, if we had any of the things you're not supposed to put in the recycling system, they could reject the load and it could cost us ninety-five dollars a tonne.
And I think people don't pay attention to what, everybody thinks it's recycled. Pizza boxes are not recycled because they have food waste in them.
That's right.
I see contaminate, I see people go and look at recycling containers, and they still dump empty milks, I mean, half-full milkshake cups in them, a different thing around the town. So we're going to have to pay for contaminated loads, that's scary.
The, the number in their contract, I believe, is somewhere around fifteen percent contamination, and that's load.
Which company?
RDS, and I believe that's right. And I just, I don't know how contaminated our loads are. You know, we've never been penalized for it, but it's, I mean, we can all visually attest to there's contamination in our, in our recycling. I just can confidently tell you that that's going to cost us.
How is that sixteen percent calculated? Is that contamination by weight?
Yes, sir. So I've told you a whole lot, but not told you much because I can't stand here and tell you to recommend at this time that you enter into any agreement with recycling.
I mean, it looks like it says twelve percent. Item two point eight.
Okay.
Looks like if the average amount of residue in one truckload is greater than twelve percent of such material.
So comparatively, if you look in a blue car, there's only twelve percent of that material. It doesn't seem like very much to me.
With glass?
Right.
I don't know, maybe you could put a lot of, you could put a lot of pizza box, by weight, you could put a lot of pizza boxes and a lot of milkshake cups in there.
However, it doesn't take the one liquid milkshake to contaminate a lot of other stuff and make it heavier.
I, I.
And I don't know, but it just seems like recycling is such a, in the air, it's what is recyclable, what's not recyclable. And everybody that comes here is educated a different way.
I, if you were inclined to consider recycling, I'd ask, delay. I don't know that we need to start our summer schedule May 1st anyway. I don't think we got to be picking up trash on May 1st at three o'clock. I think we can continue, but I think we have some time. If you wanted to consider it, I could ask for more time. But I don't think it's going to, and I'm not going to come back with better numbers, I guess.
Well, I guess there have been a couple of issues raised that maybe need a little bit of clarity. And a recommendation for what to do, a manager's recommendation. So can we put that on our May agenda? Two weeks enough time to resolve that and make the recommendation?
Don't we have to notify basically recycling now? Ask you yes or no, because we're already within the thirty-day window. Do we need to be outside of the fifteen-day window?
I would ask that they, they give us extended, we don't start May 1st, maybe start June 1st. Only if we don't have to.
But that's not, that's not a contract signing recommendation.
But it just gives more time.
Without any penalty?
Without any penalty. And that, that would just mean that if we can, if balance can continue, it's whatever schedule, June 1st or the end of May.
Or at least until the war, but.
No need for your comment.
And then I guess the other, you know, the other question is, if we were to continue as is, I could make, I could make up that hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars somehow if we're going to continue there. But then I, I can tell you that if that one ninety-five that we're paying now to incinerate is going to be more, be equal to or more than recycling, I believe it's going to be.
Our, our typically rate is what?
Seventy-six, fifteen.
And our recycling rate is?
Seventy.
Seventy.
Accounting haul.
Plus the hauling.
Well, today it's seven, but with this new, new contract, it'll be eighty-one dollars and thirty cents.
Accounting the hauling.
No, that counts at all.
That does count.
I think recycling is in a state of flux right now.
That, that sounds like the decision's made, so.
It's not something we can't come back to. To me, right now, the dollar, I hate to say it this way, because it's not just about money because we're in the public service business and we're trying to do the best that we can for the public. But I do think the public is prioritizing expenditures right now. And so this is not something we can't come back to in the future, when it, when it becomes better public policy.
Yeah.
To do that. But right now, public policy tends to fall on the financial side, not on the, necessarily a recycling side.
I agree with that. When you're, every year in a crunch, cash in your pocket is a king. Don't part with it if you don't have to.
There's a lot of people in our community don't have the cash in their pocket right now.
That's right.
There's so many people out of work.
Yes, very difficult sort of thing.
What's raised is the question of the franchise. If, if we were to suspend, you know, come back to it later, I think we could consider putting the franchise back out there to see if that opportunity exists on there. But I think it's going to be expensive, more than it was five years ago.
If you get.
Still an option.
You have enough users, though. There would be some who would opt for that regardless.
They're still doing it manually too.
That's a valid management.
Yes, thank you. Uh, let's see, does that, so we've covered your items under new business. We also addressed item J two. That brings us back to items from the attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I, I have one matter I'd like to discuss with the board in closed session. It's a potential litigation matter, and I'd like to have a closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege of discussion at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, in that case, Cliff, that brings us back to you for the coastal storm damage mitigation fund.
Yes, sir, this is a grant that the state has issued for, well, it'd be for beach nourishment, in our case, and I've asked David Ryan to talk about this, and also how this grant would marry up with potential projects for the baller, Hurricane Dorian.
Good morning.
Good morning, David.
All right, so this morning, I'd like to go ahead and speak to you regarding this grant request, which is part of a DEQ, Division of Water Resources Coastal Storm Damage Mitigation Fund. This fund was developed to assist coastal communities to recover from hurricane damages. These funds may only be used for costs related to beach nourishment projects, artificial dunes, or related work. Each unit of the local government making application may receive up to a maximum amount of two point five million dollars. No cost share or local match will be required. The timeline on the grant is an initial two-year period with up to an additional one-year extension available. If funds were made available, we would be targeting a summer of 2022 construction schedule. It is our understanding that the other northern beach towns will be submitting an application, which will only strengthen our submission to create project efficiency and economies of scale. This work will be coupled with a FEMA public assistance claim for sand volume losses sustained from Hurricane Dorian. The grant submission deadline is April 30th, 2020, and staff would request the board to authorize the town manager to proceed with the submission of the grant application and for the board to provide a letter of support for this application. Thank you.
Any questions for David?
Where? Michael? Thank you, David. In that case, I think we'll take that as maybe one motion, which would be an authorization to submit for the grant and for the board to provide a letter of support for the application.
I'll leave. Sir.
Question in a second, any further discussion? Well, those favor signature by my saying aye, aye, opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, David. Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. All right, so that would bring us then to the.
Do you have anything else, Professor?
That would bring us to the Board of Commissioners' agenda, Commissioner.
Oh, thank you. At this time, it's the customary time of year for us to present for an exit action on the Government Access Channel, Government Education Access Channel budget. There are no few changes in the budget for this year. One of the major changes is a reduction from the ten thousand dollar a year grants that are normally given down to five. This budget is very conservative, taking into revenues, as well as taking into the fact that we do not propose using huge amounts of fund balance in this current budget. It's been the board's view, this Government Access Channel board's view, that large-scale expenditures have been paid for with a cash basis, not with a financing basis. We've made several upgrades to the channel over the past few years, as well as in this current year budget, having to buy a vehicle. So that's why you see a lot of amount, fund balance, which was suggested by the county to go ahead and use rather than finance as we went along. So your consideration is the current budget. It is, like I said, very conservative. It does make some cuts. Every community puts in a thousand dollars per year and have been getting back ten thousand. This year, we're only getting back five in order to meet those changing financial needs. So if anybody has any questions, I'll probably try to answer them. Otherwise, I'm presenting the budget for an exit board approval or disapproval today. Otherwise, I'm presenting the budget for Max Head for approval or disapproval today.
I have no other terms.
Sorry, it's that way, but, uh, and I would make a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
Thank you. Motion is our second. A motion in a second to adopt as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, while those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Chris?
I'm there.
Mr. Mayor?
This is probably my soapbox day. We've had a lot of discussion about budgets and so forth. We've heard, heard a lot of subtle comments as well this morning. Um, but, you know, it's our time to have this tendency to bring out even the best or the worst of people. And I think we've had some of both in our community. Um, so all the healthcare workers, the police, the fire, the EMS, the volunteers at our food banks, the people that are donating food to food banks, donating money to organizations trying to help our community, the people working in our grocery stores and all the other public service areas, gas stations, people that's made. Thank you. People are being really good. Um, then again, we have some of our worst people. Um, there are many people in our community that live here year-round, such as our coast guardsmen and different other people providing services that may not have in-state license tags. They may have a North Carolina driver's license, but their tags don't represent that. We also have an awful lot of people that come and live in our community for months at a time that have been here since January, February, December, whatever those dates may be, that have out-of-state tags. We also have the huge population that come as well and live with their families that live here permanently during those same winter months to escape some of the winter weather. Those people are not here illegally. They're here to reside here, to be part of our community. And in many cases, they're our friends and our neighbors. We don't consider them outsiders for being here illegally. There's always going to be bad behavior, both on the people that have snuck in or have been snuck into the area by some of our own citizens using in-state tags. But what is tragic about this whole situation and the bad behavior coming are the people that are riding around yelling and screaming at people with out-of-state tags, where they're doing it in the parking lot at the grocery stores, they're doing it in the grocery stores, they're blowing their horns at people on the road with out-of-state tags. They're making rude and crude gestures at other people. This is a bad behavior. We need to be better than this because the people you may be doing this to are people that are here legally, not illegally. And the people that are exhibiting bad behavior by being here illegally are the ones getting the brunt of the effect of our crude behavior as members of this community. So, I mean, I appreciate the fact that we're asking people to be nice, but this is a determination of our character, how we behave. And a lot of times, this character is failing for those people that are on the brunt of such ugly behavior that make them want not to come here. Or they may be members of our different school systems who has kids with coast guard being really treated ugly when they should not be being treated that way. It doesn't say a lot for the people that are being ugly, that their character in our community is a positive aspect. My thanks go to the people that are being really good about people, helping others. And I commend the good policy behavior, but condemn the bad behavior. Thank you.
I appreciate that. That is, that is really well said and, uh, which needed to be said right upon the record. It's, uh, it's, uh, it's been extremely unfortunate to watch that kind of behavior.
And I have many people come in and express their dismay at how they've been treated. Um, there are people here that may have out-of-state tags that came here first of January to spend the winter with their children.
Yeah.
And they don't even feel safe going out in our community anymore because of the way they're being yelled at and screamed at. And that's just uncalled for behavior. Fear is not a reason to act that way.
Thank you very much. Um, while we're in the commissioners' agendas, I'll ask if anyone else has any items, Mr. Sears? Mr. Fuller?
I do, yes, I have three things.
Okay.
Um, I heard a suggestion in one of the letters that was read this morning that I'd already thought about and I think it's very valid. And I, I don't really want to invoke on every other board member, but I do think in these times that it would be important for us if nothing except for a sign of gesture, um, that we not take any money from the town.
Question in a second. Further discussion?
That's a fair question. I was going to suggest that you make it longer.
Okay.
As if we're considering budget cuts, the vote ready, uh, directed to the mayor.
How about the remainder of this?
I, I will accept that as friendly amendment to my motion.
Absolutely.
That being the motion is the second. The motion is that commissioners take, the board, mayor and commissioners, take no further compensation to the remainder of this. While those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Um, two other things that may be directed more at the attorney, one might be directed at the mayor, but I've been asked and I cannot find the answer, but is the control group meetings subject to the North Carolina Open Meetings law?
That is attorney's question, because I don't know the answer. That will be attorney's.
I haven't had a chance to review that with my impressions yet. It's a body made up solely of designated local governments that carries out a local government function. So I would imagine that it is subject to, you know, meetings laws under general.
And if that is the case, may I ask you as a member of the control group, could you bring out the control group, how people can access that control group meeting so that they can listen in or? I'm not asking that they participate in, but that they can listen in or see in the, the meetings. I won't appreciate that effect. And then the last thing I had was with the attorney, which, I know you said you wanted to go in closed session. Understood basically that was just the property. Our attorney have litigated potential litigation handling, but that was my focus. I'd like to go in to also discuss personnel on the attorney client.
I'm going to have one more item to take ahead of that, uh, for closed session. So when the time's first get, try to find somebody to make a motion, probably in terms of the attorney to include all the purposes included around the closed session.
They just, I don't think you request closed session, I'll do that later.
I know, but you, the issue that you wanted to request is then with the.
Closed session to discuss the board, the county attorney, Outer Banks, the inside.
Thank you. So we will get to that point, um, requesting that, um, who had personnel, the events, uh, near the matter that you brought to us for the attorney. I will ask you to straighten my question. I'll forward whatever the board has stated. Uh, that brings us to the mayor's agenda and I have, we have, uh, there the future talent vision that this is the sort of the, the marker for the standing opportunity for the rest of it to make comments, um, in the spirit of the retreat that are opportunities to improve the town ideas. I don't know that that's a discussion that we're probably going to have for the next, uh, month or two, although if you have a great storm, let's, let's put it down on paper. Uh, but understanding it is the margins of probably not, probably not a great storm. Um, so that's going to bring us to the end and I need to ask if there are additional public comment?
Yes, sir.
Whether those are, um, for, that the board will consider those outside of, uh, I don't know. We'll deal with those.
So, um, Hey, from Peyton Jensen, please keep our lifeguards, we rely on them to protect us and give us a feeling of safety. We know it can be costly and we actively help with good donations and rise. We will do all we can as a community and in good to help all set the cost programs by our safety and our beaches. Greg Despo, um, Reston, Virginia, 8231 South, over Oregon, in the road. We will support whatever decisions the board makes regarding re-booking for public safety, but it would certainly be easier to take if we were allowed to access our home. Um, this may be a repeat, but the, it's Brian and Meredith Organis, 2009, South Virginia Dare Trail. Uh, to the town council, we want and need access to our real property and access to monitor the condition of saying, we are residents of Raleigh, North Carolina, and home to home and access. We are not sitting and have self-quarantine for five weeks. We do want, we do not want to cancel the 2020 summer rail season and only for ourselves, but also for the business owners and employees of Maxhead. Uh, and then last, Susan Rice. I'm sure you read this one. Mayor Connealy, I'm writing to discuss the decision to close Dare County to, in, uh, non-resident property owners and not writing you to tell you to open the bridge. I'm telling you, it is already too late. And it's done by some of the comments made by locals and their assumptions on the finances of owning a beach home. I bought that house 15 years ago in the height of the market. It is worth more than my home in Northern Virginia and is the biggest investment I have ever made. I've lost money on it every year and would lose money if I sold it today. My house down there is an active life for the Outer Banks, not a natural decision. I also do not go down to Maxhead for a vacation. I'm going down to clean, paint, shampoo, love and figure out what else needs to be done. Yes, if I am lucky, I would have gotten an early morning walk on the beach in the midst of it. But just to be clear, there is not a vacation on the Outer Banks in my schedule. Even though I own a beach house, I can't afford it when I'm down there. I still keep up my day job remotely on top of the shores. Understanding your concern of having the resources to care for anyone that is sick. It really isn't the whole nation worried about that. In some ways, it doesn't matter when you open the bridge, the damage has been done. We're not wanted and we got that message. I'm just a second-class citizen. It'll be interesting to see how it plays out in the months ahead in Maxhead. It is too late to fix it and now it's just damaging, damage control for Maxhead on top of the virus. Best of luck and I hope you are successful with the place I love, whether I decide to stay or not.
But that would sound as to me, because I've got it on the button or something. Uh, right, that's it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So that brings us to the time for closed session. Mr. Whitey, if you will incorporate all the necessary references, I wonder if the commissioners can make that.
Yes, sir. I believe the motion that's needed is a motion in a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.18A3 in order to confer with the town attorney regarding matters within the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege and pursuant to, oh, General Statute 143-318.11A6 in order to discuss one more confidential personnel matters.
Thank you. And is that where it starts the?
That covers all of the issues that were raised by Mr. Reckley, Mr. Fuller, myself and also.
So that may be the one. The motion in a second. Need discussion? While those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the board will be in closed session. Okay.
I would push that.
Yeah, all right. When is returned to an open session? Mr. Whitey, will you report for another closed session, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the board did discuss matters relating to attorney-client privilege in terms, um, and did discuss personnel matters. The board did take some actions, but nothing needs to be reported at this time.
Great, thank you. Sir? Other business done for the board? Hearing none, and a motion to adjourn with the board?
So, sorry, second.
While those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Getting in.